Under allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law is an act to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed or asked upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call please.
Mr. Bravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. See you now. Welcome back everyone.
Good evening. Great to see you guys.
We never left, did we?
We did for a little bit, but you know.
Oh, God.
Welcome back, look, we're back at school.
Yes. It's almost that time.
It is.
Well, for some of us it already was.
It was, yes. It was like going to school.
It was.
Good for you guys. I'm just reading shit my little one off tomorrow.
Nice.
Just saying, summer's been enough.
It's never enough. It's never enough.
I'm sorry.
You're done?
I've been home for two weeks, I'm done.
All right then.
Wow. At least you're honest.
Exactly.
Can't sugarcoat it.
Okay.
All right, committee reports.
No, other than, you know, well, I wasn't letting you talk about...
Why is everybody looking this way?
I was letting you talk about, you know...
Today?
Well, also, I attended the new faculty, um, new faculty orientation.
You did last week.
At the middle school, yeah.
Thank you.
It was a lot of fun, and, uh, you're very funny. And so it was a lot of fun, we, everyone, Mr. Featherman, Superintendent Featherman had everyone stand up and stay who they were, and then also have everyone in the room talk about something that happened in the summer, no matter what it was. It could be vacation, something important, something not important, it could be light, fluffy, or serious. And so it was really a great way to actually meet all the new people in the room. And then he did some serious team building. They took all the new faculty, split them up in groups to the escape room in Montclair.
That's a great idea.
It was brilliant.
Did everyone get out of that?
Yes.
So who, who did get out, how about that?
Who was the winner? Well, if it's...
One of the groups got out of the room.
Yes, one.
The high school got out.
Wait, which room did they do? Because I've done the rooms there. What room did they not get out of?
You have to follow me on Facebook to find out.
Ah, I like that.
Nice.
And so it was, it was a lot of fun.
It was fun there, I love it.
It was a lot of fun. Everyone came back talking about it, they had a great time. You immediately got to, you know, superintendent will say, immediately got to know everybody in the room. And, uh, and then afterwards, the CGA hosted a lunch for everybody, which was great, thank you very much. And, uh, so everyone got a little more of an opportunity to actually, uh, talk and meet and greet, you know, as you came down and, uh, after the team building, so it was a lot of fun.
That's great.
Very nice.
That is great.
Nice way to change it up a little bit.
Yes, it was, it was fun. I didn't do the, uh, escape room, but it was fun.
They didn't let you, did they?
No, I wasn't gonna do that, no. I'm not doing that, no.
They're fun, it's not that.
No.
Very nice. And then today we had the, uh, the welcome back to, uh, to our teachers and staff and everyone other than the kids.
Yes.
Uh, and that was very nice, right? We had a very interactive session with Mr. Featherman where we all got to do some online surveys, and that was exciting, and it was playing music.
Your speech was terrific.
Thank you, Conley. Appreciate that. And, uh, and our friend Chris Cannella also made a speech, and that was great too, and then we all got out of there, and people went to their respective buildings, so.
Yes.
So, nice.
Hard to believe it's September.
We're excited for tomorrow.
Absolutely.
All right, looking forward to it.
I like all the thumbs up, everybody's ready for tomorrow. I'll...
We know you're ready for tomorrow, we know you are.
What you're saying, social media's fully in effect with the thumbs up?
Okay.
Everybody's ready? I know I'm ready.
Everyone's ready.
I'll give you the two thumbs up for that one.
Nice.
This is my last one. No, no.
Wow.
No, it is. No meaning, my last one.
Well, yeah.
My last, first day back, this is my daughter's senior year.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's my last one. Hard to believe, it's been 12 years, huh?
Thirteen, it gets going into thirteen.
Yes.
If you stay a little longer, you'll get another pin, Frank.
Yes, you got a friend, yes.
We can give you two pins.
Yes.
Two pins, there you go. All right, so moving on, uh, we have a board presentation this evening, um, we have the CGA Pride Program presentation by Mr. Cannella. And we can start off with that.
Is Wayne going to speak into the mic?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Um, again, happy to come back here again to present our Pride program. This is the team that we put together this year. Jackie and Ariel have taken over his chair, and Jackie's gonna come up and do some presenting in a little bit. Um, we have, you know, a good mix of teachers, some veterans and some new teachers, we're trying to obviously get out there and interact with the community. They've come up with a great plan. Mr. Schoner, um, sat in with us in June to put this together. Over the summer, Jackie and Ariel, um...
Another shock.
He's all over the place.
Oh, God.
Um, over the summer, Jackie and Ariel, uh, put in the, um, put in the forms, and we did get approval.
Yeah.
Um, so just a reminder what Pride is. Pride, um, was created in Cedar Grove in 2006, 2007, when I took over as president, 12 years, long time now. Um, and the goal of the Pride program is to bring the, uh, community together, bring the community into the schools, and have them interact with what we're doing here, with the board's doing, with the administration, everybody. And obviously, the last few years, we've had a lot going on with the opening of the auditorium, um, the new facilities, and, um, so there's been a lot of things that we've been able to plan around to get people in to see all the great things that are going on. Okay, here's a list of some of the things we've done, and I'm not gonna go through all of them, um, since 2006, including giving out scholarships. Every year, we give out, uh, three scholarships, $500 scholarships, and this year, we started doing a, um, reception before scholarship night, which I think was, went really well, uh, thanking the, the, um, people, um, the community members and, um, the businesses that donate the scholarships and kinda hosting them, so the kids can meet these people. Um, so that's all we've done so far. Here are some pictures of some of the things we did, uh, last year. This was the, um, uh, other districts helping out when, when we had the, uh, asbestos incident, and, uh, we got help from other, other associations, and, uh, the Essex County Education Association donated $2,000 out of their Pride budget. Um, this is a sponsorship of the Black and Gold, um, the opening of the auditorium, um, in December, which was supposed to be in November, but it, it all, it worked out well.
It's not well.
The foam finger night, uh, last year, and again, this is the North End, um, teachers and parents, uh, had a little Pride event where, where, uh, all of the, um, stuff that the Essex County Education Association gave the parent $2,000 to buy supplies for the, uh, the new school that they were, you were housing until, uh, December, and this is the parents giving the supplies. Uh, we have some board members over here.
Other people there, too. What's that hand in his hand there? Kind of scissors.
Yes. Um, Jackie and some of the other middle school teachers at Treps, where we give out the bags, again, that very successful event. Okay, um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jackie.
Let me just lower this a little bit. Just push it to the angle. That's good, I'll just angle it, I'm used to that. Okay, um, I'm Jackie from the middle school. Um, so this year, we were awarded $10,861.40 through grant money. Um, one of, some of the events that we're doing, we've done in the past, as well as some new ones this year. So, our first event of the year is, um, a sponsorship of CG Waves, um, for the 9/11 tribute, um, and Chris would like to present you guys with a check.
Can we get a photo op?
Sure.
Right?
What's he gonna check for now?
For Cedar Grove Waves!
We don't say no to checks.
There's a lot of flags we buy.
We take extra pictures for checks.
Yeah, I know.
Everyone in the photo?
I don't, it's up to you guys, I don't care.
No, the, the screen's in the way.
We want us to stand over here?
Yeah, the screen's in the way. Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, you should, absolutely.
They get you guys this way.
All right, what's on your head?
No, you block us, that's fine.
I'm gonna learn how to attack people by the way.
Do you...
I'm a gentleman. Kind of shadowing Shoner, he might be...
I'm going to, absolutely, hopefully he'll learn how to, how to, um, attack people.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Do you know how to do that super close? We gotta find out.
What are you laughing at?
Don't worry, nothing.
Thank you. You're sending him to professional development. We're on, we're on.
Yes, it is.
And so, thank you very much, Corey. The flags, you know, do, um, every year, they, you know, just through attrition and all this sort of stuff like that, they break, we, they, people fall on them, we try to add something a little bit more, so one of the things that the Pride money's going for is that we are actually going to put a little displays in the elementaries, and, thank you, in the elementaries and in the middle school, uh, and so there was a cost of doing that, we won't try to incur it, and then we just keep on adding some stuff, and this year, we're gonna, you know, we try to keep on just adding a little bit more to the flags. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next event of the year is, um, for the grand opening of the athletic field, so we'll be donating $1,000 to that event, and that'll be a very nice event for the new field. Um, we're doing a bunch of scholarships, um, 225 for the yearbook at the high school, um, as well as the drama scholarship. And then in December, um, we did this event last year, and we're hoping to make it a little bit bigger this year, which is, um, for the elementary schools, a holiday parent night out. So, parents and families can come with their children and do a couple activities together, and then they can leave their children with teachers to do some activities while they can go out and get some holiday shopping done.
Wow.
Will the, like, Santa showing up or something like that?
Not a bad idea. Um, also, a new event this year is Bridging the Divide. Um, this is where CGA members and parents from the community will, um, have conversations over dinner to bridge the gap and make the connection between home and school a little bit stronger. Um, we're also gonna be sponsoring the musical, as well as, um, for the musical, we do a senior citizen dance and dinner. This is where they get to preview, seniors from the community get to preview the play, as well as, um, have dinner here at the, at, up at the high school. In March, uh, we will be sponsoring the Student Faculty Challenge, which is where the teachers play the students in basketball and volleyball, um, and the $300 goes towards pizza, as well as some snacks for the event. Then we, Chris had talked about Treps, we'll be doing that again, where we give the tote bags away, which is a great event. Um, I know many of you have been there, and it's jam-packed gym, um, I get to fill my bag, my little guy spends more money than I always intend to.
The tote bags are great, because no one comes in...
We fill it up.
No one comes in with bags, and everyone's looking for a bag to all the stuff that they buy.
Yeah, and they went, they went real fast, so hopefully we have enough for this year. Um, in April, this is another new event, it's an anti-bullying, uh, bullying musical, Free to be You and Me. Um, this is a production that will be put on by students in all grade levels in the drama department. So this is a new one that we're excited to bring to the community. We're also gonna have a sponsorship in May for the Black and Gold Clubs, as well as the, um, high school scholarship night, uh, reception, which we had started last year. That's it, that's it.
Yes. The reception was, the, actually, the reception was actually amazing before the scholarship night, because I know...
Yeah.
Chrissy and I were there, and it really, you were there too, no? I forget, but, well, it's just great, because it's a great, it's a way, you talk about having the community, um, coming together, it's a great way for the, the businesses, everyone that's receiving the scholarships, everyone that's giving the scholarships, everyone to be socially together beforehand.
Parents, absolutely.
It was, it was...
It was a nice event.
It was a nice event, it really was.
And the food was really good.
It was.
Thank you, we appreciate it, we appreciate everything they do to, uh...
Yes.
...help the students, the community, and, uh, and working with us, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
We're gonna head out. We're all done.
You have somewhere to be tomorrow morning? I mean, I don't know.
I always use my voice this week, it's the first day you talk, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, have a great school year.
Yes.
Good luck tomorrow, thank you. All right, moving on.
Okay.
Um, from the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under bid, I have a motion for B1 and B2.
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public executive minutes of August 8, 2017. B2 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances in expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code, and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Bravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B3?
I apologize, I need to abstain from B1.
Okay.
So you aren't here.
Exactly.
Got it. All right. Uh, under business, can I have a motion for B3 through B6?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
So, under, uh, B3, motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Lion Tullvin and the Cedar Grove Board of Education for a video shoot on August 25th. B4 is a motion to incorporate the following into the Cedar Grove Board of Education's 2017-18 board goals. I'm actually gonna read the goals, because we had a public discussion, um, when we tried, when we were creating the goals, and I think it's important for everybody to listen to the final product. Um, so here we go. So it's under, um, five different categories. The first one is student achievement. Assess the impact of character education as part of the curriculum in all district schools. Character committees at each school will evaluate and rewrite the code of conduct practices to reflect desired standards. Conduct, uh, I'm sorry, conduct a needs assessment of AP and college prep courses offered at CGHS. Consider assessing student interest for the creation of new courses. Conduct an audit of all placement rubrics in grades 7 through 12 to establish a balance between inclusiveness and rigor, rewrite as necessary. And conduct a needs assessment of, I never, DSA?
Desile.
Desile. Class rankings at CGHS. And for those of you who don't know that, that means, um, numbering.
Intents, right.
Right.
How ten percent?
Got it. Number two, under communicate, uh, for communication, facilitate open discourse with the greater Cedar Grove community regarding district happening through the use of social media, print media, and the hosting of events. B, specifically, this effort will include the use of coffee talks, did you know, emails, Facebook, Twitter, public meetings with the Cedar Grove Town Council, and regular columns in the Verona Cedar Grove Times. Number three, under technology, continue the pursuit of future-ready certification in all district schools using the Future Ready New Jersey Framework. B, expand where possible the one-to-one Chromebook initiative across all district schools. And C, increase STEM offerings, technology programs, and extracurricular activities related to technology throughout the district. For four, under facilities, develop a strategic plan for the district that addresses the next five-year and 10-year goals. Consider a demographic study upon finalization of the plan. B, remain informed and updated on any of the residential development, developments in town to be able to plan effectively for any changes in student population. And finally, under finances, maintain fiscal responsibility while identifying and pursuing additional revenue sources for the district, including but not limited to signage on district property and the Cedar Grove Education Foundation. That was a lot. Uh, under B5, motion to accept the generous donation from the North End FSA for the dollar amount listed to be used for purchase of a lock box for outdoor resource equipment. And B6, a motion to approve the installation payment through the high school film fund 20 account of 19 banners and hardware to be placed on the telephone poles on Rugby Road, um, on or around September 9th, which is gonna look pretty incredible, by the way.
Wait, this is finally happening?
It is finally happening.
Yes!
Yes.
We're making things happen.
We are.
Yes!
Absolutely.
I've been wanting that forever.
By the way, Mr. Schoner, may that happen.
Did you?
Yeah, we did.
You did not.
I did too.
Well, actually, through the, through...
We did 20,000.
Through Mr. Schoner's assistance in trying to, in getting us, um, in film business and commercials...
You picked this over your, your, your...
Well, Mr. Mangili, I think, chose the, uh...
Yes.
Yes.
You know, there's, yes, you know, yes.
It's very exciting, yes.
He's a selfless man.
We're all excited.
Did I just throw a thorn in him?
You, well...
I'm actually glad to see you excited, Frank.
Oh, I've been wanting this forever. I like this.
And for those of you who don't know, it's actually gonna be some big banners that are going to start on, uh, really the whole length of Rugby Road, right, where, with the telephone, um, where the telephone poles are, and it's, it's actually pretty cool looking, so.
When are they being done?
The ninth, January the ninth.
Yes, so, um, so, yeah, I'm really excited about that.
Did you ever see him excited about something?
No.
I would say any discussion, but we're already discussing, so do we have anything for the town to talk about on these?
No, thank you, whoever did this, David.
And thank you to Mr. Mangili for making it happen as well, we appreciate it.
It's fast, yeah, it's very fast, which is great.
It's awesome.
Yes, um, and, and good luck to us with our goals, we really try to incorporate, uh, a lot this year, there's definitely a lot on the plate. Um, some of it obviously is, is a continuation of, of goals as far as communication and, and finances, but they remain very important items year after year. All right, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Bravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. All right, from the office of the Superintendent in Schools, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, uh, S20?
Yes. So moved.
S20. Second.
Um, S1 is a motion to retroactively approve Melissa Radke, South End School, grade one teacher, return and leave replacement, um, at the rate listed therein. S2 is a motion to approve Michael Tedesco, Cedar Grove High School, introduction to computer programming, computer science teacher, yay, at the rate listed therein.
Yes.
Uh, S3 is a motion to correct the salary for Donna DeFabius?
Fabius.
DeFabius, sorry, according to the new 2017 through 20 CGA agreement. S4 is a motion to rescind Alexis Zama-Taro, I apologize, her resignation on August 21st, 2017. Um, S5 is a motion to rescind Courtney Taylor for her resignation on August 25th. S6 is a motion to retroactively approve Carmela Varicchio, North End School, fourth grade leave replacement teacher. S7 is a motion to retroactively approve Gwen Greenwall, Memorial Middle School, um, paraprofessional. S8 is a motion to retroactively approve Dia Mirati, South End School, fourth grade leave replacement teacher. S9 is a motion to approve Michael DiDichara, lunch duty stipend at the rate listed therein. S10 is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers for the 17-18 school year at the rate listed therein. S11 is a motion to approve the following substitute nurse for the 2017-18 school year, the rate listed therein. S12 is a motion to approve Carol Travato as a substitute lunch aide for the 17-18 school year, the rate listed. S13 is a motion to reimburse the following summer help custodians for fingerprinting expenses. S14 is a motion to approve the following fall coaches for the 17-18 school years, stipends revised for the CGA contract, um, for 17 through 20. S15 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S16 is a motion to approve the following leave absence. S17 is a motion to approve the electronic submission of the statement of assurance of the district mentoring plan. S18 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S19 is a motion to approve the following school volunteers. And S20 is a motion to approve the following personnel for home or supplemental instruction during the 17-18 school year at the rate listed. Huh. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, no, no.
Roll call please.
Mr. Bravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye, other than I'm abstaining from S11.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, except I'm abstaining for, um, S20. Under policies and regulations, I believe Mr. Featherman has some reading, which he promises will be short and sweet.
Ready? Yes, I do, and it will be. Just let me know when you're ready.
All right, start the clock.
I'll start the clock. And here we go. First of all, a special thank you to the Policy Committee, we met on August 9th to review the latest policy updates, and here they are. Policy 1240, Evaluation of Superintendent. The New Jersey State Board of Ed recently adopted additional revisions to Administrative Code 6A:10 entitled Educator Effectiveness. The only revision required in Policy and Reg Guide 1240 is removal of quote "written" from quote "annual written performance report." Policy 3126, District Mentoring Program, this is a revision. The New Jersey State Board of Education, when revising Administrative Code 6A:10, also revised Administrative Code 6A:9C entitled Professional Development. The Regulation Guide was revised, as the code clarifies the length of time a new non-tenure teacher shall be employed in their first year of employment, should receive support, it is at least 30 weeks. In addition, the Policy and Reg Guides replace the term co, core curriculum content standards with, as you all know, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
all know, the New Jersey student learning standards. Policy 3221, 22, 23, and 24, the New Jersey State Board of Ed recently adopted additional revisions to administrative code 6A:10 entitled educator effectiveness. This chapter addresses the evaluation procedures for all teaching staff members, as well as education specialists, those being guidance counselors and nurses, and all administrators. Strauss S. May, as you know, is our policy provider, developed separate policy and regulation guides for each of these categories that includes updated definitions, timelines, observation requirements, and other code-specific language. Policy 3240, professional development for teachers and school leaders. This is a revision. Revised administrative code requires a teacher's or school leader's PDP, which is the professional development plan, be developed by October 31. 5610 and 5620, that's suspension and expulsion. These are revisions. Public law 2016, chapter 45, was recently signed into law, limiting a school district's ability to expel or suspend young students. The new law places limits on out-of-school suspensions and expulsions in school districts, and requires them to implement early detection and prevention programs to identify young students in preschool through grade two. Those are quote the young students who are experiencing behavioral or disciplinary problems. Policy guides 5610 and 5620 have been revised to incorporate the limitations outlined in the new law and requirements. How do we do?
Nice job.
Thank you.
That was excellent.
All right. Off we go.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Then, under policies and regulations, can I have a motion for S21?
So moved.
Second.
S21 is a motion to approve the first reading of the following policy updates, revisions, and Mr. Federman just read to us. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S22?
So moved. Second.
S22 is a motion to approve the following curriculum that has been revised and/or aligned to the New Jersey student learning standards, and it's listed therein. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
He's like picking on me. You are picking on me today.
Under contracts, can I have a motion for S23?
So moved.
Second.
S23 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students recommended by the director of special services. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
I abstain from S23. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. We have somebody. Yes.
Good evening. Wow! Way to start our year.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Good evening. Good to have you all back from summer. I speak first. I have one thing to mention.
Oh, just for, just name and address.
Oh, yes. David Snyder, 4 Granite Drive, Cedar Grove, New Jersey.
Talk away now.
I'm a member of the Cedar Grove Environmental Commission, and my first comment is to say, I hope you all had a chance to get out and walk the wonderful trails in Cedar Grove.
Absolutely.
I was also so encouraged to read in the high school newsletter about Mr. Muffrey's, is that correct?
Muffrey?
Muffrey. A class that performed such hard work and labor on the trail up on, in Verona, actually, I think it was noted, but in one of our trails here that they improved and worked hard on, and we're going to be improving a trail here in Cedar Grove this year, and would invite the school, in whatever fashion the student body would like to participate, but we are looking at a trail that would incorporate perhaps about 5K, that would not, perhaps no one would have to travel across the road or sidewalk in this particular route that has been selected. One of our members, Mr. Maxwell, is in charge of that, and look forward to creating yet another wonderful trail for Cedar Grove and its citizens, but also the high school might want to participate in that. The second thing I would say is a...
When is that starting?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, we're working with the town council.
Okay.
So I believe we have, the town council has set aside some money. Now we are in the dialogue with them and a, not a contractor, but a, an actual, someone to visualize what we need, and, and, so hopefully, this fall.
Could you keep us abreast, you know, keep us updated?
I sure will, and Mr. Maxwell is going to join me tonight, but he was unable to.
Oh, great, yeah.
But we'll try to keep you posted.
That would be awesome.
Thank you.
I can cloak this invitation out to, I believe it was the AP or Melston that helped out the last time.
That's correct.
If we can expand that to other clubs, they're always looking for stuff to do.
Terrific. That's great. We would invite that and welcome that as well. So thank you.
Any service.
Yes.
Good, exactly. The other comment I would ask you, and perhaps you already looking into this, but as someone who has a student in the football program, it's a wonderful program, but I'm aware that there are new helmets out that are trying to lessen the impact, and they are expensive. I know that, but our high school team has some, and that's wonderful, and I would just encourage you in the coming month, as you think about budget, if there's any extra surplus to, to give them, so that they can purchase for all the football players, this special helmet that's new on the market. I understand it may, you know, prove not to be as helpful as they are hopeful it will be, but the idea is technology is helping us in our sporting events to be creating a safer environment for our youth. So I'm excited about that, and hope that our team will do well this year, of course, but also be attentive to perhaps ways we can keep them all safe.
Great, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yes, thank you.
Can you actually bring up a good point? School is back in session, and there are crosswalks for a reason, so. Thank you. There are crosswalks in town for a reason, so if you could maybe just pay attention a little bit more when you're driving down the road, like specifically on Bowden in the morning, and not run over your fellow board members as they're running, that would be fantastic, because there's going to be the cross-country. I know they take that route, and there's a lot of kids who walk home on Bowden, so it's important to please pay attention. Somebody didn't this morning, so that's why I'm just putting out that public service announcement. So thank you for reminding me about that. Okay, anything else? Okay, I close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, I know it says September 19, but that's actually the high school open house, so we're going to change it to September 18, which is Monday, again, here, 7:00 PM executive, 8:00 PM regular. And then the following meeting will be October 3, same time and same place. Any other closing comments, or anything like that?
No. No, I, I would just like to wish everyone a, you know, faculty, staff, administrators, a wonderful school year, fun, educational, safe, and, you know, just everything we do. And it's going to be a great year, as always, but, you know, it's, I think it's the first time in a long time where we're starting off without any real stuff going on, so I love it, you know, at least it's a little bit, you know, it gives you a little bit of a, a peace of mind, which is great to see finally, after all these years of everything that's been in, not in turmoil, but in flux, you know, house cleaning and all that. So, no, so I just want to say that, and I'm looking forward to another year, you know, serving as a board member, and doing what we do for the next year, and so.
I just wanted to tell you that if you go into the buildings, I know we talked about this, the custodial staff, the buildings and ground staff did an amazing job. You, when you walk into the high school, I mean, they repainted stuff, reconfigured things. Over at, if you look outside of North End and South End, they fixed the columns. They really, they really worked hard over the summer. It's, it's dramatic, just to talk about what you're saying.
No, it's going to be great. I mean, first time we're using our football field. It's just like a whole great year ahead for everyone, so thank you to everyone.
We use the auditorium today at the high school.
Yes.
For our teacher welcome.
It's awesome. Yeah, so it's really, really exciting to see it all happening in a, with nothing in the way.
And the flags of the high school.
Yes, yes.
Lots of different flags and banners and everything.
Yes, a lot of flags.
Yeah, if I may, just as the superintendent of this district, you know, it's easy to forget from time to time what this board of trustees' mission is that I sit upon, that I'm lucky enough to sit upon with Mike DeVita. You know, all the decisions we make all year long comes down to tomorrow, right? I mean, we, all the discussions and debates, if you will, the agrees to disagrees, all of that, that happens behind closed doors, publicly, wherever it happens, it's all worth it, because we all share a common mission, and it really comes down to what's happening tomorrow. So I couldn't be more excited about it.
Absolutely.
I can't wait to see the kids come back, see the teachers in action. What a great day tomorrow is. What a great day.
It's a long two weeks for you.
And yes, Pete, it's finally over.
I will be there with a smile on my face.
Middle school or one more?
No, one more here.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you did over the summer. It was definitely a slightly quieter summer, but still extremely busy anyway.
Just remind me of that next year. I can make it a little bit more hectic for you.
We're good. Thanks. We'll take, we'll take slightly quiet, so.
Yes, we'll take, definitely take quiet.
All right.
Quiet is good.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
No discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandela.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Good night, everyone. Have a great first day tomorrow.
Yes.
Enjoy.